Good evening, everyone. We will call the Monday, October 6, 2014 City Council Meeting to Order, and we'll first start off with a roll call.
Scott. Drew. Louis. Doyle. Wright. Estes. Nordstrom. Roberts. Weifenbach. Laurenti. We have Quorum.
Thank you, and we will now proceed with our invocation. We'll recognize Pastor Dale Barcher, and you are welcome to participate, but not required.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, tonight we are reminded of the words of David of old. In Psalm chapter 434 and verse 8, David writes, "Taste and see that the Lord is good; blessed is the one who takes refuge in him." How grateful we are tonight, Lord, for a leader, a community member, an anointed king, who realized to whom comes his strength and where he should go to find refuge. We pray tonight for the community leaders that sit before us tonight, that you would grant to this city council and staff a great amount of wisdom and strength, guidance for the day and for the future. Father, tonight we stand on the anniversary of a hundred-year snowstorm that literally paralyzed our community for a short time. What a difference one year makes. We are thankful, Lord, tonight, for the resilience, the strength, the fortitude, the graciousness, the unity of our community. How thankful, Lord, we are for this place that we live, that we raise our children, that we work, that we play, and we worship in. Tonight, we would be mindful of council member Jerry Wright. We pray, Father, for his health, his strength, for those doctors that doctor so well with him by his side. Grant him peace tonight and comfort. We would pray, Father, for the members of the family of these city council leaders. Thank you, Father, for the sacrifice of time away from them that these leaders are giving, day in and day out. For this evening's session, we are grateful. We pray in the name of the King Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Dale. We are now on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions, changes, or subtractions from tonight's agenda? We'll go to Chad Lewis, Alderman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add item number probably 4A. It's an informational item from Alderman. What's your name?
Drew.
Drew. Alderman Drew.
Why don't we put that under, if it's okay, could we put that under Council Items and Liaison Reports and make it 67A?
Well, this is actually something that would be appropriately added before general public comment as it is an informational item about general public comment.
Oh.
It's just an educational thing that she's doing.
Oh, very good. That's right. All right. We will do that. Anything else? And before we proceed to the motion and the vote on the agenda tonight, I just want everybody to know that item number five is a presentation only. There will not be motions taken on that item. It is not on the agenda for action. It is on the agenda for presentation only. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted? We have a motion by Estes and a second by Drew. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now have four employer awards, all from the Rapid City Police Department. So if Chief Jaggers could meet me down front. Okay, if we could have Pam Cowling and Sergeant Chris Hall, Senior Officer Rich Holt, and your families come forward, and Senior Officer Akers. I don't think he's here. So we have three. It is a privilege tonight to recognize these three distinguished people and their tremendous service to our community. Now, to avoid rumors, none of you are retiring, right? This is just, this is, I don't know, for a lot of years of service. And so I will now turn the microphone over to our police chief, Carl Jaggers.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we'll start with Pam Cowling. Pam is our accountant at the police department, and she's worked at our department for over 25 years. And she keeps track of all of our payroll and our travel expenditures and those types of things. So keeping track of 153 employees that are working on a 24/7 basis, and our schedules are very fluid and always changing, is a very complicated task. And she does it with perfection, and she's very popular at the police department because she's responsible for making sure that we get paid. So we all appreciate her work. So we have this plaque, Pam Cowling, for your years of dedicated service to the citizens of Rapid City and the Rapid City Police Department, September 25, 1989 to September 25, 2014. And I'll just mention that, in addition to Sergeant Hall and Senior Officer Rich Holt, we also have three other officers that are celebrating their 20-year anniversary on the same date, and they weren't able to make it. We have Detective Steve Neville, Lieutenant John Olson, and Senior Officer Kyle Akers. So between the five of them, we have accumulated 100 years of service. And in today's day and age, that is extremely rare for us to have five employees that started together on the same day in 1994 and that are still with us today. So each of those five have contributed greatly to our department and our community, each in an individual and unique way. Each of them had different career paths thus far in our department, and I'm very proud and thankful for their longevity and their service. So first plaque is presented to Sergeant Christopher Hall. Thank you for your 20 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Rapid City and the Rapid City Police Department. Thanks, Chris. And the second one, presented to Senior Officer Richard Holt. Thank you for 20 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Rapid City and the Rapid City Police Department. Thanks, Rich.
And now we have an item from the Rapid City Beautification Committee. Kathy Robeson could come up, and also our Ward 2 council members, Richie Nordstrom and Steve Laurenti. Is Julie Lean here tonight? Okay.
The Beautification Committee gives Yard of the Month awards June through October. And this month's winner is Julie Lean. She lives on St. Charles Street, actually fairly close to where I grew up. And I found her mowing her lawn using one of the old push mowers. I didn't even know anybody had those anymore. Beautiful little house, and we do have a picture somewhere. There it is. A white picket fence. And she told me that day that I stopped, all of those planters were on the ground that morning. They'd all been dumped. And luckily, because of the quality of work she did in planting them, she was able to put them back in the planters and start over again. But she just does a lovely job, and it's a lovely addition to that neighborhood. She receives a $25 gift certificate from Jolly Lane, and as well as information or, what do we call that? Not a plaque, but in letting her know and letting the neighbors know that she is Yard of the Month.
And we now have a Sustainability Award for Fenske Media Corporation. If Dr. Benning could come up along with John Fenske.
Oh, okay. I think I can manage. So on behalf of the Rapid City Sustainability Committee, we would like to present John Fenske and his team at Fenske Media Corporation with a Sustainability Award for his commitment to sustainability practices that benefit the business environment and give back to the community. This award was given on basis of some major changes in Fenske Media's facilities. One is their humidification system, which they changed from a boiler model to dry fog, and it uses significantly less energy. They also updated their entire facility's lighting from 400-watt metal halight to LEDs, and that ultimately saved a lot of energy also. And they also installed a new solar energy system almost a year ago, a little shy of a year ago. And that is giving unused energy back to the grid. In the first 60 days after their installation, it generated approximately 26,000 solar kilowatt-hours and offset about 40,000 pounds of CO2 emissions. That's enough energy to power approximately 29 homes for a month. And he gave me some new numbers that since installation, they have offset 288,000 pounds of CO2 emissions, which is roughly the equivalent of 364,000 vehicle miles driven. So that's a great savings. They also have a wonderful recycling plan. So they're recycling a lot of paper and cardboard. And what was really special too and inspiring about Fenske is that he said he really didn't do this so much for the monetary savings or for the recognition, but just because he felt like it was doing the right thing for this community. So we thank him for his efforts and wanted to award him for that. And the plaque is made from beetle kill wood.
We've got to figure out what to do next, Jennifer. What are we going to tackle next? Water, maybe?
Water, yeah.
Water's a good thing.
Yes, well, thank you. Did you want to?
Well, we appreciate the award tonight. We didn't really get into this wanting to win anything to do it, but we're very happy. Rapid City's been good to our family, our employees. We're trying to do our best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's your turn.
Oh, yes.
We now have a World Habitat Day proclamation. Dr. Yousara, if you would come up, please. Whereas on a global scale, one out of every three city dwellers, nearly a billion people, live in slums or rundown areas. Many slum residents lack secure tenure without any legal documentation of their property rights in addition to living in severely inadequate housing conditions.
Whereas secure tenure not only facilitates opportunities for investment and wealth accumulation, but also provides a source of identity, status, and political power, and serves as a basis for the pursuit of other rights. And in recognition of World Habitat Day 2014, October 6, Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity will address the lack of decent housing around the world, including the need for affordable housing in the Black Hills and?
Whereas Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity will continue to build and preserve simple, decent, affordable housing for hard-working families in the Black Hills in the context of working to revitalize neighborhoods while reducing environmental impact by recycling building materials through the Habitat Restore.
Now I therefore, Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim today as World Habitat Day. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the global family of Habitat for Humanity in over 90 countries, the Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity, Board of Directors, staff, and volunteers want to link arms with you this day in recognition of the progress we have made serving over a half-million families with permanent housing, home preservation, and disaster response services, while mindful of the housing needs of the 1.5 billion people who live in slums and substandard housing. We are approaching our 25th anniversary serving in the Black Hills. We also recognize the over 10,000 hours of volunteer service committed every year, enabling the creation of nearly 100 affordable, sustainable housing solutions in partnership with hard-working families who also volunteer to build or improve their housing and ultimately pay for their housing. Further, we celebrate that Habitat families contribute nearly $200,000 per year in the property taxes they pay, supporting our great schools and dedicating public servants who keep our neighborhoods safe. With your continued support, Black Hills Habitat intends to serve another 100 families over the next five years. Thank you.
I'm familiar with the work that you do, and it's so very important for Rapid City to have the resources of Habitat for Humanity. I've worked with families that have gotten those homes, and it changes their lives, and you know that. You see the looks on the children's faces, and usually the moms that are the ones that are going to be the household owners, breadwinners. And it means so much to them to have a secure place to live. So thank you for all your work.
I'd just like to say, just a brief comment about Habitat for Humanity. I've worked with them on a couple of different projects, and we've also got another home down on Fifth Street that's going to be opening up very soon, if it isn't right now. And I just saw the red ribbon cutting for that as well. So fantastic job. Congratulations to you folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we are on item number 4A, and this is an informational item on the process for city council meetings. Ward 5 council member Darla Drew has worked with my office staff on a better process and explanation for how these proceedings operate. So Darla, you have the floor.
As you can probably tell, I'm a little procedurally challenged because I didn't even know when I was supposed to go help out with the mayor. But anyway, I know what it's like to be a person that is new to presenting here at city council. It can be a daunting thing, even if you've done it several times. So the staff and I have been working on this brochure that will help people that are new to city council and presenting at city council through the process. It just gives them some basic ideas on how to do it, where to find the speaker forms, and how to prepare for speaking to the council. It can be kind of intimidating. So I thought that maybe something like this could help the public understand. It's really pretty easy. And we welcome your comments. And we have to do a little repair on the front page. I just noticed this, or it was just pointed out to me. So we'll have these ready very soon. So just something that I've been working on because I know what it's like to sit in those chairs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now on general public comment, and we'll proceed with going to item number 5. Again, there will be no action on this item. Who's speaking on this item, on item number 5? If you'd come up and identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours. And this is a summer concert series presentation from the Rapid City Downtown Association.
I have a couple slides. I'm not sure if they're up and ready.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Quaker and city council. My name's Megan Whitman. I'm with Main Street Square. I want to thank you for an opportunity to update the city on our 2015 goals and objectives. 2014 was a fantastic year of events. We saw an increase in events held at the square, growing our lineup to more than 200 events, I can proudly say, and also increased attendance. Our entertainment was broadened with national, regional, and local acts from musicians to celebrities, and even, as you can see in the picture above, even a 20-foot giant puppet. We expanded our kids' activities, providing many free activities to thousands of children and donating to more than 20 fellow local nonprofit organizations. We saw success with our new teen zone with Outdoor Campus West Climbing Mall and Dozer's Video Game Trailer. Now we begin to consider our 2015 and take a look at putting into an action plan of what we'd like to do to build on the success and the momentum of our 2014 year, excuse me. In 2014, we held more events connected with the downtown businesses that held activities occurring at Main Street Square during our events. Picture, you'll see the downtown trick-or-treat above, which we team up the Rapid City Downtown Association for, and their participation helps hold 5,000 to 8,000 children to come and safely celebrate Halloween in our downtown area. With this partnership, we're able to add more events with them and the businesses. And we're looking to encourage this business participation in 2015. We've already done so with our Love Squared Bridle Fair as well as Taste of South Dakota, a new event occurring this weekend. And we're looking to enhance this even further next year. In a discussion with the Rapid City Downtown Association, we've identified new ways to encourage more retail impact through businesses and through our events by utilizing our growth and success and adding a new opportunity for us to connect.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I am Suzette Cooney with the Rapid City Downtown Association. As you can see, we already partner with Main Street Square in a variety of ways through events. Our vision for the future partnership is through the Summer Concert Series by adding an additional entertainment stage. This stage is an opportunity to generate a funding source for downtown promotions and enhancement impacting downtown businesses. All impacted businesses neighboring this location have been contacted and are in support of the additional stage. This space, which is over 43,000 square feet, will hold 4,000 people while allowing 10 square feet per person. Main Street Square and the Rapid City Downtown Association already work together in a variety of ways. We present tonight an additional opportunity using the momentum of the Summer Concert Series to help fund a new revenue source and impact downtown businesses by using it for promotions and enhancement through the additional stage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We do not have any additional public comment items. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, we'll now move on to public comment for items 6 through 64. Public comments for items 6 through 64 is now open. We only have one, we have one speaker request form, and that is for item 40. And while Mr. Clayton is coming up to speak, I'll read that item into the record. This item 40 is about approve returning the Fairmont recycle site for South Rapid City.
We live in a society now where people are bothered by having to make two mouse clicks for a computer function instead of just one, and now we hear complaints that people don't want to drive an extra mile and a half when they've already loaded whatever it is they're going to dump, and then take it to a place that's safer, it's well-lit, it's got cameras there for surveillance, it's emptied, I think, more often so that you don't find full containers, where many times the containers were in fact full during busy periods on Fairmont Boulevard. I've been to the new site, and Carl, my hat's off to you, buddy. It's always ready. I've never had to wait in line, and the containers are always very available and have room left in them. So what we have is a handful of constituents in Ward 1 who are asking that we spend an exorbitant amount of money to revisit an eyesore that we just don't need in that part of town. And it's not just a one-time expenditure to reconstitute the ground, but it's a never-ending expenditure for further trips to offload and load those containers, to maintain the grounds, to maintain the vehicles, and it just isn't necessary. So I would hope that the council tonight would vote against this idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. We do not have any further speaker request forms on items 6 through 64. Have I missed anyone? Last call. Public comments is now closed on items 6 through 64. Council members, if you could please hit your lights if you'd like to remove any item for separate consideration. We'll first go to Councilwoman Darla Drew.
Item number 40.
Item number 40. Alderman Ron Wythenbach. Okay? Any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? I'll go to Amanda Scott.
Sorry, Mary, you know I have a list, so I was waiting for everybody else to get there, so I didn't have to duplicate them. Item number 21, 31, 32, 44, and 53. Thank you.
21, 31, 32, 40, 44, and what was the last one?
53.
53?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are on item number 21, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, mayor. Item number 21 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign resolution number 2014-092, a resolution repealing the 2005 policy regulating the provision of city utility services to properties located outside the city limits and establishing a new policy. I'd like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor, please.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Lewis, and you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. May I ask the public works director a couple questions, please?
You may.
Thank you. Terry, on this, if you're just looking at it and trying to compare the 2005 one to the current one that's being replaced, the main thing that sticks out is it looks like the water rates are being reduced, but I think there's some other things that are tied to this, isn't there?
Yes, that's correct. Really, two main things. One is the water rates. We're going from 150% to 100%. And then the other item is that it's going to require basically a more detailed annexation agreement with the customer and the city, and it really spells out the requirements that if they become contiguous to the city, they have to annex, and if they do not annex, we have the option to shut the water off. Or if the city chooses not to shut the water off, the rates go up to either 300% for residential customers or 600% for commercial and industrial customers.
And currently, in the current policy, even though our water rates are currently at 150% of what other inside Rapid City people would pay, we don't have the option of shutting off those services if they're granted to outside sources?
That's correct. The old resolution really gave the customer the option to not annex their property.
Okay. And is there anything else between these two? Well, I know one of the questions I asked you, just to finalize this, was I asked you, why would the city reduce their rates?
You know, the primary reason is, if you recall, we recently received a rather large grant and debt reduction from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. And one of their requests, although it wasn't contingent on us doing this, they did request that we reduce that rate down to 100%, because they were coming to the table with a lot of money, and they thought that that was a fair thing for us to come to the table with. Keep in mind that those customers out in that east Rapid area that are going to be served by this new water system, they're going to be paying in addition to the normal water rates that the city customers are paying, they're also going to have a surcharge somewhere in that $40 to $60 range, so they're paying a sizable amount more than what residents in Rapid are paying.
And thank you. That's the part I wanted to get across. That $40 to $60 is per month.
That's correct.
Is that correct? So the outside the city limits, those people being serviced by the city services are still going to end up paying more?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Terry, for that explanation. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for approval. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 31. Amanda.
Thank you, mayor. Item number 31 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the city of Rapid City and Discovery Circle LLC for the forced main casings cost reimbursement not to exceed $41,620.80. I make a motion to approve, but I'd like to retain the floor.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Laurenti, and you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. May I ask, I think I'll start with Mr. Walsterdorf a couple questions, please? Thank you. Terry, I noticed the one word on here, and I even stressed it when I read it, or at least I tried to, was reimbursement. So this is coming to counsel after the work has already been done, so my main question is, why are we looking at a reimbursement rather than bringing it forward as a project to start with?
I'll try to answer this the best I can, because I'm not that familiar with the details on this particular, but like most oversized agreements that we enter into, we're really reimbursing the developer for the improvements that they put in. They install them upfront. We pay for the oversized cost, so we're actually reimbursing the developer back for costs that they, improvements they put in based on our request. So in this case, we requested that they do the additional casing work. They installed it, and now we're going to reimburse them for that work.
And this doesn't have to, even though it's over $41,000 since it was part of the work that they did themselves, the city doesn't have to bid it out as a separate project or anything?
That's correct.
All right. Does this happen often, where the city makes requests of developers that are doing things that don't go through the process, and then the city reimburses it after the fact?
Normally, the oversized agreements would be done ahead of time, and to be quite frank, I'm not sure why this one's happening after the fact, but normally, the oversized agreements are brought to you ahead of time, so we're all on board with it. In this particular case, evidently, we did not have the agreement ahead of time.
Okay. And the only other reason that I pulled this off or to look at it is that I know in our audits that are being done, the city is still working on procedures to put into place to follow up on making sure that we don't overspend on departmental things without supplemental appropriations. Was this already covered in the budget, or does this, will this require a supplemental appropriation to that water enterprise?
This should not require a supplemental appropriation. We allocate money annually for oversized costs.
All right. Thank you. So this will be out of the 2014 budget?
That's correct.
And then also, just a point that I was going to bring up was, it gave the city council three options, and we could actually reject this, and so I guess my question is, if the city requests this, why would that even be an option presented for the city council to take on?
It's not the preferred option.
Thank you. I yield the floor, mayor.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 32.
Thank you, mayor. Item number 32 is a notice to property owners to construct and repair sidewalks. This is a project number 14-1943. I'd like to make a motion to have one property removed off of this list and then approve the rest of the list, and I believe Mr. Walsterdorf could probably explain why I'm making the request to remove one property off better than I could, although I could stumble my way through it, but Terry, I think you've probably got the better answer.
Can you list the property, then we'll get a second and proceed. Do we have the?
It's property belonging to Mr. Elliot Warshaw.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with the exception of the property just named. Do we have the location of the property for the record?
1,005 Milwaukee.
1,005 Milwaukee Street. You have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Warshaw had contacted me. He was unfortunately unable to be here tonight, so he wanted to make sure that this was at least addressed. He was quite shocked when he was notified by the media that he was on this list, and he had had, in his mind, no notification. So there was a crossed wires between the city and Mr. Warshaw, and I really do appreciate staff getting ahold of him and working out an arrangement with this, that the sidewalks will be taken care of, that Mr. Warshaw will be given a little bit more latitude because of the crossed wires. And Terry, if you can provide any other information, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's correct. He had several sections of sidewalk that were in pretty bad state of disrepair, but the original code enforcement letter only included two particular sections, about 10 linear feet. He did get that repaired, but there's about 60 linear feet of additional sidewalk that was not included in that original code enforcement agreement or letter. So out of fairness to the property owner, we think he needs some adequate time to get that put in. So in our conversations with him today, he's agreeable to put it in. We'll send out a new notice letter to him, give him until next summer to have those sidewalk improvements made. If they aren't done, it'll be put on a list next year.
Thank you, and I have no doubt Mr. Warshaw will make sure that those section, that 60 linear feet, will be completed. So the crossed wires were that he just felt he wasn't notified because he felt that he had taken out a permit, which is required, but a lot of people may not necessarily take out the permit to repair their sidewalk. He had repaired the sidewalk that had had the code enforcement or the complaint to code enforcement, and so being contacted by the media and told he was on here, he found it a little bit embarrassing, and he really, really appreciates that staff is willing to give him some more time. So I would just like to take this opportunity and let our citizens know, just because something happens, if you totally don't, we're not aware of it, don't just take it. That's what the city council is here for, that's what the city staff is here for. You have to speak up when a mistake is made. We are more than happy to work with people, and I know the staff really works a lot to make sure that their citizens are treated with respect and treated fairly. Thank you, mayor. I yield the floor.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 40.
Item number 40. Thank you, mayor. I believe this is the item brought up by Alderman Wythenbach. Item number 40 is to approve returning the Fairmont recycle site for South Rapid City. I'd like to make a motion to decline this.
Second. We have a motion to decline and a second by Laurenti. Do you still have the floor if you'd like it?
Thank you, mayor. In streaming the public works committee when this item was brought up, I do believe our public works director, and I believe that he's also attached a staff report on here, I'm not necessarily saying that I won't consider approving something like this in the future, but I do think the public works staff needs a little bit more time to kind of go through the traffic patterns and to see if we can make the citizens campus a little bit more safe. I would just like to have more information before I actually approve to go backwards on something. If it's needed to go backwards to encourage our recycling, if it's needed to, you know, satisfy that area, then my only concern is, I think there's some other areas in the city that could stand to have a recycling center opened up, and that's where we're really going backwards, instead of getting everybody to use the citizens campus. So, mayor, may I ask Mr. Walsterdorf or maybe even Carl Mollberg a question or two?
You may.
Thank you. One of the things that was brought up, and Carl, I don't know if you want to answer this, you're probably a little bit more closer to the home on this one. I did have some citizens contact me concerning this after it went to Public Works, and even though Mr. Clayton came up and said that, you know, a lot of the containers at the Fairmont site when it was open were full, I had some citizens tell me that we have some containers at the other sites that are relatively full as well. That would be over on Anamosa or south of Anamosa, and then the other one, I believe, is over at Fitzgerald. So one of the questions that I promised I would ask, given the opportunity, is, what is the schedule for getting those containers picked up? Is it done weekly, daily?
Our schedule is, we have two full-time people during the summer, two full-time employees, two roll-off trucks that try and keep up on the sites. The weekends are our busiest times, especially with the yard waste, and on the weekends, we have four trucks rotating between all of the sites. Yes, it does get busy at times. It's very, very busy, especially at, you know, everybody likes to get to work in the morning, drop off their materials, and do other things. We try and do the best we can to keep up with it. For example, on the weekends, we have a part-time person that just works two 10-hour shifts on Saturday and Sunday to keep up with the sites. During the summer, we have three full-time employees working 10 hours just to keep up on those sites, because they are popular and because a lot of people do use those sites. It isn't on a specific schedule. The folks will get out to the site, they'll find a dumpster if it is full. Again, remember, we're not only taking care of the yard waste dumpsters, but we also have the recycling dumpsters too, the most popular being the cardboard that fills up the quickest.
Thank you. And then, I can't remember, all right, I don't know if I remember correctly, but during the winter months, is it just the yard waste containers that are removed from that site, and the cardboard and the recycling containers are still on those two sites, or are all the containers removed from the site?
We just removed the yard waste containers. The change this year is that with the new citizen campus, we will have the 24-hour drop-off center open with yard waste containers there. That's been a complaint in the past. You get a nice winter day, people like to get out, do something in the yard, trim a few bushes. They have nowhere to take that unless the landfill was open. So this is another convenience with the 24-hour drop-off. At the landfill, it will have containers there. But we do have the three containers, the cardboard newspaper and mixed recyclables, at all three sites year-round.
All right. Thank you. I yield the floor, mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Ron Wythenbach. Ron.
I appreciate after the fact. The reason I brought this up, I didn't take Common Core math, but I've had several, several people, before I ran, after I got elected, that have come to me with concerns about the Fairmont Street recycling. If you go, if you use the citizens camp, which is great, and it's open during the winter and all those good things, it's very dangerous for the people in the south part of Rapid City not to have access to the Fairmont Street recycling. After conversations with Mr. Walsterdorf and Carl, I was going to make an amendment tonight, but I didn't get the opportunity, to start the conversation about having the public input, because that's one of the reasons I brought it forward, is they didn't feel that they had their voice heard. And there's particular times that, we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that people come to the dais here, it's not that easy to call one of us, reach one of us, and talk to one of us. They just don't feel comfortable with that, and I appreciate Ms. Drew's moving forward with something to try to bridge that gap. And that's exactly what I'm trying to do in South Rapid. There's a reason that I came back into Ward 1, and there's a reason that I'm bringing this forward. I just don't make this stuff up. I don't sit home and think about, oh, how can I raise havoc? In 2011, that Fairmont Street recycling facility was on the slate a few bushes, they have nowhere to take that unless the landfill was open. So this is another convenience with the twenty-four hour drop-off. At the landfill, it will have containers there. But we do have the three containers, the cardboard newspaper and mixed recyclables at all three sites year-round.
All right, thank you. I yield the floor, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach. Ron.
I appreciate after the fact. The reason I brought this up, I didn't take common core math, but I've had several, several people before I ran, after I got elected, that have come to me with concerns about the Fairmont Street recycling. If you go, if you use the citizens camp, which is great, and it's open during the winter and all those good things, it's very dangerous for the people in the south part of Rapid City not to have access to the Fairmont Street recycling. After conversations with Mr. Walsterdorf and Carl, I was going to make an amendment tonight, but I didn't get the opportunity, to start the conversation about having the public input, because that's one of the reasons I brought it forward, is they didn't feel that they had their voice heard. And there's particular times that, we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that people come to the dais here, it's, it's not that easy to call one of us, reach one of us and talk to one of us. They just don't feel comfortable with that. And I appreciate Ms. Drew's moving forward with something to try to bridge that gap. And that's exactly what I'm trying to do in South Rapid. There's a reason that I came back into Ward One, and there's a reason that I'm bringing this forward. I just don't make this stuff up. I don't sit home and think about, oh, how can I raise havoc? In two thousand eleven, that Fairmont Street recycling facility was on the slate to be refurbished, to be refurbished. The money was then slipped from that site to the citizens campus, to help pay for the citizens campus, that and some grants, to my understanding, that were used to build the citizens campus. Do I think the citizens campus is okay? Yes. Do I think there's, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, so I'm not here to second-guess anything. But I want to start the conversation with the people in South Rapid. North Rapid has a recycling and composting center or grass clipping center. West Rapid has one too. And West Rapid has one, a nice one, because South Rapid moved theirs behind to refurbish the West Rapid one first. And that's all I'm asking for, is that we use the same measuring stick. If you go to the Fairmont Street site now, it's not pretty. There's like a big giant mountain of asphalt tailings or something that's piled up. And if that's better than a dumpster that gets used, I'd be surprised. I would challenge my colleagues to give me the opportunity, to give me the respect that I would give you, to believe that I am telling the truth when I sit here and I say that there's people in South Rapid that want to talk about this recycling site and the fact that the money was switched from the recycling site to the citizen campus. I appreciate that. And I understand that. And we can't roll back the clock, but what we can do is have the opportunity to start the conversation. That's what was my intention tonight, as I had talked to the staff earlier. So I appreciate whatever motions we could come besides declining it. I'll just bring it back again and start the conversation. Some kind of public awareness program or something over there that people can give their input into what will work for them over there. Getting out on a highway, on a Highway seventy-nine, if any of you've turned left across two lanes of traffic going sixty-five miles an hour, you know it's difficult. And on a Saturday when it's busy, it's almost impossible. I almost, I, I took pictures of it. I almost witnessed an elderly person, you know, almost getting wiped out. I mean, he would no longer be here. I just cringe at the fact that we can't have the conversation. I don't want to stymie the conversation, whatever it takes to move forward. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wyfembach, I like what you're thinking, however, we're in the wrong location. And the gist of what I've received in phone calls as well, I've notified them about just exactly what you reported to us tonight. All the, all the information that you give us tonight is factual and is correct. However, one of the most influential factors for me was what happened out there at that site. What that site is, is looking like right now is like rolling hills essentially, and it is on top of a, a landfill now currently, and it would take a tremendous amount of money to refurbish that site. However, if you want to think about some other location other than this location, I'd be glad to join you with you because we do need to take some other considerations for recycling efforts within the city of Rapid City. If I can ask a question of Carl Mollberg, please Superintendent Mollberg.
May.
Carl, I just want to make sure that I'm saying this next point correctly. We did have an injury out there at that site?
During two winters ago, we did have one of our part-time drivers, on our weekend driver, slip and fall on the, the ice because of the undulation of the, the ground out there. Now, it could have happened anywhere else. That just was a, an injury that, that did cause time away from work. It ended up being a shoulder injury.
Thank you. And thank goodness it wasn't a serious incident, so. And if we can do whatever needs to do, Alderman Wyfembach, I appreciate what you're trying to do, trying to do more in any efforts of recycling, and we need to do that. I agree. However, this is not the appropriate location for it. And if you want to carry on the conversation, I'd like to join in that conversation, but not at this site. I'll yield the floor.
We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to clarify something, but I, I know that I've already spoken, in case you wanted to cover someone else, but it's just a clarifying point.
Go ahead and clarify.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wyfembach, by denying this going forward with the Fairmont, it was my understanding, and so I'm directing my question at the Public Works Director, it was my understanding based on the memo that was attached, that this item is coming back, that the staff was going to take a look at the traffic patterns and was going to take a look at it and put together some information as far as what it would actually cause to bring the Fairmont site back in, into circulation and that, and what the other options would be. Did I misread that, Terry? Or is it the intention to bring it back to Public Works?
My understanding is the recommendation that came to the council tonight was a recommendation to reopen Fairmont.
Right. And that's why I denied it?
Yeah, if that was the case, we would not be investigating other options. I, I think in my memo, if I could add a little bit here, is that we need to know what problem we're fixing first. We're, we have some good engineers that work for us here, we have some great engineers that work for us, and, and we're good at fixing problems and we're good at solving things, but we didn't, we need to know what the problem is first. If the problem is extended wait times at the landfill, then that's researched out, that's find out, you know, confirm, are there extended wait times? When are they? What can we do operationally to change that? Are there safety issues at the entrance to the landfill? I'm not convinced there's safety issues, but if, but if there are, let's look at options that potentially could fix the problem there instead of walking away from the investment that we've made. So I, I guess if the councils would like us to do some research on it, we certainly will do that. And I would suggest giving us some time to really take a look at some of the waiting periods out there, that type of thing. So it may take sixty or ninety days for us to get a good track record on what's going on.
Thank you. And so it, just to let my colleagues know, I would greatly entertain a friendly amendment that would include bringing it back to Public Works, because that was my understanding per the staff note, was that they would look at the traffic patterns, look at the safety issues, and look at the other options at the citizens campus. So if we need to make that a directive, a friendly amendment would be more than welcomed, and I would support that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Steve Laurenti. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it would be a substitute motion, is that correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to send this to Public Works staff. Terry, to, to research this issue and bring it back to the council. Terry, a month, what would be the timeframe that you would need for that? Two months?
I would like at least sixty days.
Okay, let's make it that, sixty days, and bring that back to Public Works in sixty days.
Okay, we have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Estes, to, a substitute motion to have Public Works staff look into this and bring this to the first Public Works meeting in December. And you still have the floor if you want to?
If I could, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to briefly speak a little bit about the wiseness of some of the words already said here and, and Ron's desire to serve his, his ward, because I too had, Ward Two uses that area, and I personally used that area myself. So getting this information is important. As a fiscal conservative, I was initially a little set off by the, the motion because I know the cost to maintain that location, but maybe there is another location once we have all the information. So I'm willing to revisit this and see where it goes from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the substitute motion. I'd, I'd like to be in the conversation of, and I think, because I think Mr. Walsterdorf has an important factor there, is let's find out why. If this same would have been done at the beginning, I think that site would still be there, but I'm, I'm okay with that. But I think, understanding why this needs to be looked at with some public input, I would appreciate, and I understand what you're asking, it's like, okay, why are we going to do this? Well, the same reason we moved it. I mean, if there would have been public input, we could have gotten some of those answers. So I think at this point, if sixty days gives you long enough time for the public input, and I'd be willing to help you figure out why, what, where, and how. So I think those are important questions. So thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on item number forty-four. This is a legal and finance item, so we'll go to our chairman, Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number forty-four is confirm the appointment of Andy Ainsley for a three-year term, the Human Relations, excuse me, Human Relations Commission. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis. We have a second. Second by Scott, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. The primary question I have on this is in looking at the memo that's attached, we're confirming the appointment of Mr. Ainsley, but there is another vacancy from the way I read the form. My question, and I don't see an, oh, yes, I do see an attorney, a city attorney here tonight, is does, will the vacancy disrupt the case review since we changed the ordinance? Do we have enough committee members without filling that vacancy so that cases can go on?
The ordinance provides that commission members serve until their replacement is appointed. So I think all of the positions will be filled until, well, all of the positions will be filled, even until the mayor appoints the, the final person.
Thank you. Just wanted that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on item fifty-three. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number fifty-three is to approve the two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen five-year plan for governmental buildings. I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask our city finance officer a question, please?
May.
I already gave her a heads up over here. I whispered to her, I'm coming at you. So Pauline, and just, I finally was able to read the CIP minutes, and I was just a little confused because one of the items on here, well, the item I pulled, number fifty-three, is approving the five-year plan for the government properties. And in here, in trying to read the minutes, it looks like some money was shuffled around, but I couldn't quite follow it. If you could just explain what we're doing with this five-year plan, I sure would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. What happened was we got the needs list from the department directors and prioritized those A, B, or C. All projects that were prioritized, A, were putting into two thousand nineteen because we had already programmed two thousand fifteen through eighteen. Well, one of those was some remodeling at the public safety building, and they have money budgeted in two thousand fourteen for that. And so it seemed silly to keep the additional fifty thousand out five years, so we brought that in to two thousand fifteen, so it'll overlap for them, and it'll be a two-year project. And then on the flip side, to offset that, we took fifty thousand out of the roof replacements line item and pushed that out to two thousand nineteen.
So the swapping around was only the fifty thousand, and that was to put it in conjunction with the public safety building project that was already going to go forward?
Correct.
Thank you. That's the part that I was lost on. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, the clarification.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the end of our consent calendar, and we are now on items sixty-five through sixty-seven. Public comment is now open. We do have two, we do have two-speaker request forms on item number sixty-seven. And we'll first go to Jean Kessloff on item sixty-seven. And while she's coming up, I'll read this into the record. This is a approval of appeal by Constance Estradescu of the Historic Preservation Commission's recommended denial of the siding permit at eight twenty-one St. James. Good evening, Jean.
Hi. I have a little picture. My name is Jean Olsen Kessloff, and I am here on behalf of myself, a West Boulevard Historic District property owner. I am not speaking on behalf of the Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission. The West Boulevard Historic District is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It was nominated for its architecture. Tudor, Dutch Colonial, bungalow, four-square are but a few. Each style comes with its own defining features. Defining features are things such as window style, finistration, brackets, exposed rafter tails, dormers, roof lines, including front or side gables, and siding. Siding can be narrow, wide, or even shingle. You are being asked to approve a request to replace four-inch siding with six-and-a-half wood grain smart side. This request has been determined to have an adverse effect on the historic property by the State Office of History. Eight twenty-one St. James is a craftsman-style house with narrow siding, dormers with exposed rafter tails, and the front porch that has been exposed and closed at some point. Wider siding affects this defining, defining architectural feature. Per the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, if the original siding is in need of repair or replacement, you have options. Repair and paint the original siding, where repair is not possible, replace in kind. The last option is replacing with a composite wood product, matching the original reveal with smooth side out. This would include mitered corners, if that is what is on the house presently, and no corner boards. The Secretary of Interior Standards are codified law in South Dakota. The city gets federal funding for doing preservation. Notices were sent out in two thousand and thirteen to property owners, which I gave you a copy of, of them. If you, and you also have a copy of the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association notice in March of two thousand thirteen, where a representative from the State Office of History would be speaking on things such as siding, windows, doors, and roofs. There were also a couple of workshops that were held in the district by Norrie Winter as the city is working on design guidelines. Efforts have been made to inform property owners of West Boulevard Historic District. Real quick, I'll show you above examples of how applying siding can alter the historic appearance of, of a home. This is the first one showing that defining features are covered up. This one actually is a duplex, right side and left side. I wonder how those people get along. This is before and after, showing how windows can be affected by applied siding and wrapping the windows in metal. This one is from, actually from our historic district. I talked to both owners for their permission to use this. These houses were built by a father for his two daughters. The top one has been sided with wider siding, and you can see how it has affected the defining features of that house. The bottom one is original. Also, the top one was not done by the current owner. This is not about a warranty or, or no future maintenance. It's about the-
Jean, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
This is the last sentence. It's about the standards and codified law in South Dakota. Thank you.
Thank you. Also on item sixty-seven, we have Constance Estradescu. And you have the floor. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Coker. Before you start the clock on a procedural point, is it possible to get more time? I, I heard that it was three minutes, and is it possible to extend time?
I'll tell you what we'll do, is if you can get your presentation done in three minutes, and the council members have the option to ask questions, and usually that, that is what happens. So try to, try to get within the three-minute timeframe if you can.
All right. I do have some pictures that, of the property, the pictures that were shown by Ms. Kessloff are not pictures of my house, and can we have those pictures shown? Could we have some of the pictures of the older siding? In any event, this particular restoration is not about aesthetics. It is actually about something that is specified in the design guidelines for the West Boulevard Historic District, and were pointed out by Bill Freitag at the historical review meeting. Mr. Freitag voted to approve this particular project. The environmental component of sustainability takes into consideration two things. One of those things is that this home, which was built during the depression area, era, according to the index, a modest home, modest materials, and if you go through the home virtually to non-existing code standards, was, and was uninsulated. And what I want to do to this home is to make it habitable for my retirement. I bought this home in two thousand seven at the height of the market. The home sits between Ninth Street and Mount Rushmore Road at the fringe of the West- and Mount Rushmore Road at the fringe of the West Boulevard Historic District. It is surrounded by non-contributing structures, most of them rental properties that are poorly maintained. But because I love the house, I grew up in an old house. I live in an old house currently in California. I am from the area, went to Black Hill State. My sister, Nikki Spencer, lives here. I want to retire here. And that is why I am considering putting a substantial amount of money into this house to renovate it. As I said, it's not about aesthetics. It's about making the house habitable under current standards. And that can only be done by adding insulation to the house. Painting the house, the siding is in extremely poor condition. Can we go on to some of the siding pictures? The siding is in extremely poor condition. Many people, some people from the council came and looked at the siding. I spoke to John Herning, who I went to school with at Black Hill State and who is in the siding business himself, about my house. He is a proponent of metal siding, but I chose not to use metal siding. I do want to preserve the look of the house, to the extent possible under current building standards. The, Mr. Herning explained to me that what is going on with the house is because there is no sufficient insulation. Heat inside the house, which needs a place to go, is going towards the outside walls, and as a result of that, I am having condensation in the interior walls. So the siding is deteriorating. And even though I spoke to someone who said he can paint the house, it's not whether or not paint can be applied. It is whether or not, first of all, the paint will stick because of the deteriorating siding. And again, I cannot apply siding to the house without removing the existing siding. In 2007, in an upstairs dormer, there was a pipe that burst. I had extensive water damage in the house. I put in almost $30,000.
Ma'am, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
All right. There are no other alternatives than to remove the current deteriorating siding in order for me to add insulation to the house and preserve the house. Also, I wanted to point out-
Ma'am, I just want to point out that the motion from committee was unanimous to grant your request.
All right. I just want to add one thing that-
Over the years, I have watched people snatch defeat from the jaws of victory.
Okay.
So I just want to encourage you to wrap up your comments.
All right.
All right.
But that is, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll sit down.
That ends the public comments for items 65 through 67. Have I missed anyone? Okay, public comment is now closed. We'll start with item number 65, and we'll go to Councilmember Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 65 is the first reading of ordinance 6012 in ordinance amending section 17.06 of the, chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, resoning the, the, thin described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for medium-density residential district to a public district for property generally described as being located south of Anamosa Street between Willsey and Blaine Avenue. I move approval.
We have motion by Lewis, second by Estes for approval. Any discussion? Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 66.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 66 is the first reading of ordinance 6015 in ordinance to consolidate provisions related to the municipal gross receipts tax, codify the use of revenue, and appoint a promotion agency by repealing sections 3.16.040 and 3.16.060E, and adding chapter 3.18 to Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis.
Second.
Second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 67.
Item number 67 is appeal, approve appeal of, by Constance.
Istrotescu.
Thank you. Of Historic Preservation Commission's recommended denial of siding permit at 821 St. James. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis and second by Estes, and this is to approve the applicant's appeal and to allow her to put the siding on.
Correct.
To go ahead and grant the siding permit. This was a unanimous recommendation by Legal and Finance. I understand it's in its current place on the agenda because it's a public hearing item. Is that correct? Okay. Alderman, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. If I can address it to, I believe Sarah's in the audience. May I ask Sarah a question, Mayor?
Ben.
Thank you. Sarah, I did stream Legal and Finance and listened to the discussion that happened at Legal and Finance concerning this item. However, when I read the supporting documentation that's attached to this agenda, it appears to me as if the state historic preservation's recommendation is that this would adversely affect the contributing or the contribution of this property?
Yes, it is an adverse effect to historic property. I believe the question at Legal Finance was whether this particular adverse effect would result in the building becoming non-contributing into the district. So there's a little bit of a subtle difference between those two, the contributing status and the effect of one particular project.
So the applicant at this time is only requesting to replace siding. And as the city council has been instructed in the past, one attribute of a historic house will not necessarily kick it out as far as not being contributing to the historic preservation of that style. It has to, there's like a total sum of the different attributes, whether that's the siding, the windows, the roof changing, that type of stuff.
Yes, the removal of its contributing status is more a result of the accumulation of adverse effects. But each one does contribute, or does cumulate, add to that cumulative effect.
So with the applicant currently putting forth this request to put this specific siding on, if the applicant or any other applicant as owner of this property going forward were to come back and want to change out the windows or something else, that may cause the accumulating effect. But at this point, this is the first item that would be non-contributing to this property?
That I couldn't say for certain.
Okay. I yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you. I think Alderman woman Scott asked most of my questions, and you gave the proper responses to them, Sarah. Thank you very much. This one's very difficult for me to approve, but I'm going to do that. The primary concern that I have is reducing, for the bigger picture for me, is the reducing the carbon footprint. And if heating, insulation, and issues along that nature will mitigate some of that carbon footprint, I'm supportive of it. However, the long scheme thing of the entire picture for me, for the historic preservation area, is my concern of losing more houses to the non-contributing factor. I do want to retain as many houses or homes in that area to, so that they are still remaining contributing. Because this historic preservation area seems to have some different challenges that we need to get the word out at different stages of these building permits. And it seems like, to me, it just seems like we're not being able to communicate that to the public very well. And if some fashion form, in addition to what we've been doing so far, to get that information out to the public, we need to do that. And I appreciate your efforts, and Sarah, thank you very much for all your hard work on this committee and reports that you've given to the, to the Legal and Finance Committee. Thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Ron Waifbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. And I'm not, I was dissenting vote on Legal and Finance, so I don't, the record reflect that or not. But I have since, and the reason I was, that vote was I wanted an opportunity to research this and understand historic society, and I appreciate Ms. Kessloff's position on it, because if there wasn't somebody advocating for these types of things, then it would, nothing, I mean, it would just get out of control, and we would lose the historical character over there. And I looked at it, and I've looked at the alternatives, and there really, in my mind, was no reasonable and prudent alternative for her to use, other than the siding. And the overall caricature of the house is maintained. She can live in it. She, it doesn't become a rental property, which so oftenly happens, which is unfortunate, and it makes it a position where she can afford to purchase the siding, insulate the house, maintain the house, and we keep the caricature of the house. The differences that I could see was the siding, the uses that were available. Back when that house was built, it probably, the siding probably wasn't available at the time, or might have been used at that time. So I have since changed my position on it, and I wanted the record to reflect that. And thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to Alderman Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. As I look at the historic district, and I represent a lot of that area, these problems are only going to become worse as these homes age. I mean, this isn't going to be a problem that we see once. And so I think that it's really imperative for us to get information to these home buyers as to what they're buying into before they purchase these homes. And I don't know how that word is getting out. I was talking to Jean this afternoon, and she said it's really difficult to get the word out, whether through contractors or through realtors, or whomever you want to use to get the word out. It just isn't, it isn't resonating, that this is a district we have to protect because it is our historic district. So I guess it would be incumbent upon the people that are working in that area, that are trying to actually make sure these homes are compliant to the historic standards, to make sure that the people that are purchasing these homes know what the effects are, that if they want to replace a window, which I think people should be able to do that, but I guess in this district, they can't. So I mean, that would be just something that people should really know more about it before they get involved in one of these homes. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this. You know, obviously, the West Boulevard, the historic district, does bring certain challenges that don't occur in other parts of town. I went over here. Painting is not an option. Just flat isn't an option. And I can understand that, I mean, the six-inch reveal doesn't perfectly, does not match the four-inch reveal, but I, I guess I kind of looked at it as a moral victory that we weren't having a conversation about vinyl siding. You know, I've, I've been to these historic preservation meetings where somebody's proposed a vinyl siding, and they say, put this stuff on, you know. So, so I, I'll just yield with that, but I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for you, Sarah, if you don't mind. We've had quite a few of these come forward in the last three years, three and a half years since I've been on the council. And one thing that always seems to ring true is the state never wants to let us know if, this is going to bump it out of being a conforming structure. And there are things that people should be allowed to do to their own homes. And I grew up in the West Boulevard District, beautiful homes over there. And you have people that buy these homes because they love these homes, and they want to bring them back to what they were 100 years ago. And then you have people that buy these homes because they're buying a home. And they expect to be able to do whatever they want to do to their own home. And that's right. You should be able to do that. But where do we find that line? And why can't the state ever let us know whether or not it's going to be conforming or non-conforming after we either allow or disallow people to do something?
Your question is, why doesn't the state say whether or not in each particular instance, whether the change will have that cumulative effect? Their, you know, their role in the 11-1 review process, this process that we're required to follow by state statute, is just to comment on the project as to whether or not it'll have an adverse effect. So I mean, they, they follow through, that's the part that they provide there. They're, the city will be doing a re-survey of the West Boulevard Historic District next year, and that'll, I think, really help alleviate a lot of these problems, these, you know, this kind of information gap that we have in situations like this.
Okay. Well, that answers part of the question for now. I do agree that somehow we need to get the information out there to people that are buying in this district, and people, you know, I hate to see people come in and get blindsided. And it seems like that's been happening a lot in the last, well, at least the last three and a half years that I've been on the council. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here.
Motion carries with one no from Amanda Scott. Thank you, everyone. Great discussion. We are now on items 68 through 72. Item 68 through 72, public hearing is now open on these items. We do have one speaker request form from Dave Pappin on item 72. However, he's indicated on the form that he's here to answer questions if anybody has any. And Sarah, you would, you want to raise your hand so we all know who you are. If you'd like to speak, now is the time. Otherwise, you can just stand by for questions if they have any. Okay? Public comment is now closed unless there's anyone that I missed.
I'm here. On number 72.
72? If you could state your name for the record and the floor's yours.
I'm Lisa Walter, and I'd like to start by thanking you all for this opportunity and your time and attention. I'm here to discuss my concerns about what I've learned since hearing Capital Management's plan for a 45-foot-high statue installation off of Interstate 90. When I first learned of the plans, I thought, oh, great, next to the water park, it's going to be more Marge Simpson than Lady Liberty. I'm very pleased to tell you that is not the case at all. So I'd like to start by thanking Dave Pappin and Capital Management. Dave has been very gracious. He's gone out of his way to welcome my input and show me that what the developers have in mind is not a caricature. It's a tasteful reproduction, and I'm grateful for that. I appreciate that. But I also learned during our conversations that if the owners decide they'd prefer to avoid this discussion, all they need to do is withdraw their proposal, and they can move the installation across the interstate to the Ramada Inn, and all they need there to put it up is a building permit. And I think that's astonishing here, in a city that has a long and really robust history of discussing what is art and where can we put it? Where should we put it? And also, what is a sign, and how should we regulate those? So when Mr. Pappin invited me to meet with the developers and see their proposed sites and weigh in about what would, I thought would be a better fit, I really appreciated his offer. But I'm appealing this based on, I think these are the kinds of decisions that are better made by people having a discussion as a whole about where should these things go, what's appropriate, what are the community standards, instead of making them on an arbitrary case-by-case basis. So one of the issues that concerns me is who gets to decide what goes up and where. And I'm certainly not opposed to business owners being able to do with their property what they want to do. Having said that, though, we do that all the time in the city because we make zoning decisions, we pass ordinances, we have discussions about what is appropriate according to scale and things like that. So I would just say that, you know, is this proposal art, or is it advertising? And I could argue that it's more of a sign. The city says a sign includes, among other things, and I am paraphrasing here, "any device illuminated or non-illuminated, visible from any public place, or located on private property but exposed to the public, that directs attention to a product, service, or place." I don't think I could find a better illustration of that than to put up a statue off the interstate that's designed to entice travelers to stop, spend time, and of course, money. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's, that's not a bad thing. But in a city that has spent so much time discussing and regulating signs, I'm pretty surprised that only a building permit is needed to put up something twice as tall as a building it's next to, or any other considerations like that. And I'm worried about proliferation of this sort of thing. For example, let's imagine a group of developers who want to put up a series of 40 or 50-foot statues depicting presidents on Mount Rushmore, or if they won't fit there, the more modern contenders in a popularity poll. So let's put them somewhere else. Let's say close to B and L Bagels, the McGillicuddy House, Modrick Travel, or the Colonial House. So I'd like to make it very clear that I don't oppose this particular structure or this particular piece of art, but I'm concerned about the precedent. And I'm just wondering if we're discussing, if, is Art Alley, you know, is it vandalism, or is it vibrant modern art? Why no discussion here? So I thank you for that. I'm just hoping to start- So, I thank you for that, I'm just hoping to start a public discussion about that, and I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Dave, Mr. Pappin, would you like to speak?
I don't.
Okay. Very good. Public comment is now closed on items 68 through 72. Let's see here. Looks like we have consent. It's like there's only one item. We have a motion to approve item 68. We have a motion by Estes and a second by Amanda Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 69, Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 69 is the resolution of 2014-076B, levying assessment for claim of miscellaneous property. Move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Laurenti for approval, and we'll go to Pauline Assumption, our finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that we did have a property owner come in and pay their assessment between legal and finance and today, and so, we've already updated the resolution to reflect that, and that's why it's showing on a non-consent calendar item versus a consent.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 70.
Item number 70 is second reading of ordinance 6008, an ordinance allowing childcare centers as a conditional use in light industrial districts by amending section 17.22.030 of the RAPID Municipal Code. Move approval. Second.
We have a motion by approval and a second by Richie Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Alderman, approval? You said a motion by approval.
I said motion for approval.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 71.
Item number 71 is a second reading of ordinance 6007, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of the RAPID, chapter 17 of the RAPID Municipal Code, residing within described property as requested by Green Design International from low-density residential 1 to low-density residential 2 for a portion of the area generally described as being located at the south adjacent Highway 44 and east of adjacent Elkvale Road. Move approval.
We have a motion by approval.
Exactly.
By Chad Lewis. And a second by Nordstrom.
Of course.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 72.
Item 72 is appeal of the Planning Commission's decision of request by Rent and Associates LLC for Robert W. Acres, senior for major amendment to the planned development to allow Statue of Liberty structure for a property generally described as being located at 620 Small Drive or yielded floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Okay, we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions to pose. Can I?
Prefer a motion, but if, if you want to ask, if you'd rather ask questions.
I'm not ready to, to give a motion at this time. First of all, if I can address a question, if she's willing to, Lisa?
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you for filing the appeal. You echoed a lot of the same questions that I had, and that just shows my ignorance. As a city council member, I probably shouldn't be that ignorant, but I was really confused. I also serve on the Planning Commission as the liaison, and when this came to the Planning Commission, Mr. Pappin was there and, and gave a really brief presentation, but based on the slides that were given at the Planning Commission, it really didn't show what it would look like, and I was a little confused, because when I first saw it on the Planning Commission, the way it was written, I thought it was going to be down on the lower end where the water park is going in, and the sign on the fence is actually on the La Crosse side. And then, at the Planning Commission was the first time that I had learned that it was going to go up in front of Boston's. And I believe in your email, you said that if it was 45 feet in the air and the torch was lit up, you would be able to see it?
I don't believe in plans to light the torch. I don't believe that would be allowed. I think there's been a lot of discussion, and Dave is certainly better prepared to answer that than I am, but certainly, if it moved across to the Ramada, it's going to be more visible there. And my concern was just is how is it going to be lit at night, and those kinds of things. And as I said, you know, Dave spent a lot of time explaining it. It sounds like a tasteful installation, so that went a long way to assuage my concerns about that. But it's just, you know, kind of a matter of, well, this one is okay, but how about the next one? And if all we need is a building permit to put these up, we're going to be the biggest goofy golf course around, so. And, and I, I do appreciate Mr. Pappin's efforts. He emailed me photos, because the only photos I had seen that were printed had been in the paper, so it's from the backside, you didn't have a very good view. It sort of illustrated the scale of the thing, but not really what it was going to look like installed. So, I appreciate their efforts.
And thank you, Lisa. Mayor, may I ask Mr. Brett Lenbach a question then?
May.
Brett, and then, I believe staff, this is going back a ways, like three weeks ago, I believe staff had represented this at the Planning Commission, that the only reason that this had to come forward as a major amendment is because it was being added on to the project, and it would be, I think, as Ms. Fisher, Ms. Fisher told me, it would be noticed. So, is, is the criteria that Lisa proposed, is this a sign, or is this a piece of art, or is the criteria the same, no matter whether it's a sign or a piece of art?
Yeah, in this instance, we treat this just like we would any other structure, a building. So, it has to meet height, setback. If you're going to locate something like this on a existing property, we would check landscaping and parking, just to make sure that you aren't encroaching on that requirement as well. The reason it came to this particular instance, it came to Planning Commission, is there was a planned development overlay on top of the existing zoning there, and that planned development was for the water park and the other properties that surround it. And so, if you make a major change to that planned development, it goes back to Planning Commission for review. So, that's why it went back to Planning Commission. Planning Commission voted to approve the statue as proposed, and then, Ms. Walter appealed that decision. And so, that's the reason you're seeing it here tonight, and it is true, if it was on another property that didn't have that planned development overlay in place, it would just need to meet the structural components that are listed within the zoning ordinance, and of course, any code, building code. So, in this case, as far as the building code is concerned, it does have to have engineered stamped drawings.
So, as Lisa had brought up, then, then if this was to be proposed like downtown at one of the businesses she had mentioned on 8th Street, that zoning area would not allow something like this, or would it?
What we would do, again, is look at it as a structure, and so, if it can meet setback and all the other requirements that are within that, whatever that zone district is, could be a commercial district, maybe it's a general office district, it would just be case by case, we'd have to look at it. But that's what our planning staff and our building staff would look at.
Okay. So, then, as far as this one goes, the only reason it had come back to the Planning Commission was because the water park and the hotel complex with Boston's incorporated together changed the zoning of that entire piece at that time?
Yeah, there, when they went through the zoning process, they added the overlay component. And so, that overlay component requires that any major changes come back to the Planning Commission.
And is that going forward forever?
That will, yeah. It, that overlay sticks with that property, and so, any other major change like this would have to come back again to Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Pappin, if you wouldn't mind, what I was looking for when I was sitting on the Planning Commission, and I know the pictures really didn't show up, but could you kind of just explain? I'm still trying to just get a rough idea of what it's supposed to look like there in front of Boston's, but it sounds like you've met all the criteria, so.
Well, thank you for having me come up today. By the way, it does not, it does not double the size of the buildings that are, are behind it. In fact, the hotels that are around it are actually taller than, than the statue itself. It is a very tasteful. Actually, the planning and zoning had photos, several photos that they presented, I don't know if you have those available this evening, but it, it has, it's very tasteful in its presentation. It's a duplicate that's represented with a plaque dedicating it to the visitors and the residents of the Black Hills.
And so, I thought at the Planning Commission, it said that there was going to be illumination. It didn't say what kind of illumination on the torch, but it said it was going to be illuminated, and now...
The torch itself is not illuminated. The statue is illuminated by, only by directional lighting that lights the statue itself, and no other, nothing around the statue. It just, just very similar to the actual Statue of Liberty, it's only, the lighting lights up only the statue itself.
And then, your choice, as, as Lisa had indicated, that you had told her that you could have put this at the Boston's location or at the Ramada Inn, what was the reasoning why you chose? I'll, I'll be honest with you, I was trying to tie it into Ripon Rapids, or I was trying to tie it into Boston's, and I'm having a hard time, just me. I mean, it has, like I said, you met the criteria, but I don't see the tie-in.
It's, it's not tied in, it's not, advertising-wise, it's not, it was, it was actually considered by the owners as a piece of art and something that they wanted to give to the community.
Okay, so, as far as the owners are concerned, then, this is an artwork that they're, that they're installing on this piece of ground for the benefit of the entire city?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, just the zoning ordinance requires it to be treated as a structure, which is why it came before the Planning Commission?
Correct.
All right. I still don't get it. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I still don't get it, but it seems like you've met all the criteria, so, thank you. I yield the floor.
We'll now go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach, and perhaps you deem it pertinent to consider a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I thought of a motion, but it kind of went away as the questioning that came up, and I have a question for Mr. Lenbach, because I too try to get my arms around this a little bit, because now, we're sitting up here for several years debating signs, what's a sign, what's not a sign, getting sued by sign companies, you know, all these types of things. The question I have is, is this going to advertise any business on it as proposed?
It's actually a stipulation that was attached that said that they couldn't put banners on it or anything like that that would be used for advertising purposes?
So, there'll be no water park insignia based on this, no hotel insignia, no Boston's insignia?
That was the stipulation that the Planning Commission did add, is that there would be no advertising on the statue itself.
It's just, basically, we're proving this as a structure, meet, from what I understand, is it meets the criteria of a structure? Now, whose property is it on? Is it, is it on, which parcel is it on? Is it on, and I'm getting, my concern is that it becomes a billboard.
Yeah, it's actually at the southwest corner of the Boston's building.
So, it's on Boston's?
Yeah.
So, if a person was to put up Rippin, Ripid, excuse me, for the, another
Rapids.
Business on there, it would then, hence, become an off-premise sign or a billboard?
Yeah, and, you know, I'm not, I can't recall how this is actually platted, but I think, you know, that would probably kick it into off-premise signage, not to mention there's, you know, temporary sign issues, because I, you know, they would probably, if you're looking at a banner, that's a temporary sign, as opposed to something that's permanently mounted. Then, if it becomes permanently mounted, we have to take a look at the structural integrity of how the sign's mounted to the statue, and it just kicks in a whole number of things that we have to look at.
So, it's, it's not a billboard, it's not a sign?
No.
It's just a structure? And it fits the city's criteria for a structure?
It does. It, it meets the, the building criteria as far as what we would look at from a zoning ordinance, i.e., you know, the bulk standards, height, setback, and so forth. It's my understanding that we've got a engineered drawing from Mr. Pappin as well, so we'll look at that when we do our building permit review.
That's the part I was trying to get my arms around, if it's, it's, it's put together as a structure, meets the city's criteria as a structure, they've done what they've had to do to meet that criteria as a structure. Not a sign, not a billboard, not an off-premise sign, none of that stuff.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to council member Darla Drew.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appeal of Planning Commission's decision.
So, what do you mean?
Can I retain the floor?
Well, let's clarify the motion. Your motion is to grant the, grant the Statue of Liberty, or to?
Grant the Statue of...
To deny Statue of Liberty?
Grant the Statue of Liberty.
Okay, so, your motion is to, is to uphold...
Deny the appeal?
Is to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation to allow the statue. That's your motion?
This is where it gets fun. Yes.
And, and seconded or unders... Okay. And we have a second by John Roberts. You have the floor.
These situations have come up before the council lots of times, you know, I'm a lifelong resident, and before the City of Presidents statues went up, before that time, there was a very powerful, well, not very powerful, but there is a strong committee called the Public Arts Committee, and they would look at these kinds of things to answer Lisa's question back there, you know, how do we really determine what we want our city to look like? And after a long discussion about the presidents, it was determined that it would be called Economic Development and taken away from the purview of the Public Arts Committee. And from that time on, there's really been no public arts group that has looked at any of these kinds of, of projects. So, maybe it's something we want to revisit. I'm not saying anything now, I, I will, I will vote for this Statue of Liberty to go up, but for future considerations, we might want to bring back somebody that would be outside of the council that would give us recommendations.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm really having a challenging time to accept this artwork, and because I believe this is pushing the aesthetics value that we have here in Rapid City, and as Alderman Drew pointed out, that there was an arts committee that was formed and did the president's statue, which are done very tastefully, and those, those amenities that we have within the City of Rapid City are, are done well. This one, probably for me, approaches the same, same values that we have, as a, as a former mayor pointed out, to have a flag on a side of a bar, which I thought was pushing the limits as well as of aesthetics and the, and the value of a patriotic symbol, and a historic symbol at that. I'm just not comfortable with that, because this is an afterthought that's being placed in a location that will be viewed as something very similar to, in my values of understanding what art is, is something very close to the, what we have as the concrete fish in the park. It's created a lot of stir, a lot of angst within the community, and I feel very uncomfortable about this being in that same category. Primarily, and I'm very sympathetic and appreciate historical valued pieces that we have for this, for the United States. But this here is going a different direction, and as Ms. Walton pointed out, the precedent that this is establishing is that we are looking at potential of having other 40-foot structures, meaning, meaning to me that they are twice the height of an existing building that would be located at this site, at Boston's. So, if Boston's roughly a 15-to-20-foot-tall building, this is going to be at least twice the height of that structure that we, that is existing. So, with those combinations of effects, and again, taking into consideration what happened to a former mayor, I'm very sensitive to, about what we do with our historical and patriotic symbols that we use here in the United States. And I, and I, gentlemen, I, I'm sorry, this is just kind of pushing the limits for me, and it doesn't fit or qualify for what I think is, is, in this particular location, as a, a piece of art. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Alderman Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know if maybe I'm crazy or what it is, but I actually like it, and I've talked to a few people that like it, too. And I think that, from the pictures I've seen, and, and some of the people that I've talked to, I think it's a nice-looking piece of art. I don't think it looks at all like a fish along Omaha Street, and I think that it actually will contribute to that area up there, so I will be voting for it. So, thank you very much.
Could we please display the picture up on the screen so people watching the access channel can see it, too? Thank you very much. Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to encourage my colleagues to support the motion on the floor. In the City of Presidents, Rapid City, if this isn't contributing to that whole concept, I don't know much else that would be, except for maybe another president on another corner, but this is a very stately, well-done, tasteful, it's patriotic, it's, it's all a part of the history of our country, we have Mount Rushmore, this plays right into the history of our country and its beginnings, and I will definitely support this, I think it's tasteful, it's very good. Thank you.
Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find it necessary to repeat one... I find it necessary to repeat one lesson that I learned about being arbitrary and capricious and I'm gonna ask again that this meets the criteria for this structure. I'm gonna ask our staff that one more time, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
It does meet the requirements of the underlying zone district and it's before you tonight because it's a, what we consider a major alteration to the planned development overlay on that property. So, it's entirely within, entirely within your purview to, to approve it as a use, but it does meet the structural zoning requirements.
The reason I ask it again, I just want to be more than clear that if we don't like the rules, then we need to change the rules. Whether I like this statue, dislike this statue is beside the point to me. What I'm here, just, you know, and I understand the concerns that some people may have, but the rules have been made and so the people in the community understand what they're up against when they bring something forward. Where, where it happens is where we interject our, and I'll use the word deemed pertinent items to this process. Once it's already gotten as far and it meets the criteria, there's really not a lot of choice that's given to council other than, hey, you know, if we, if we, everything that came forward, if this was to be challenged at some point as such as, I'll use the Chancys Casino on 5th Street, it was a nine-to-one vote, I was, I was the vote that said, no, that they have to, we have to let this go. The fellow that was bringing the casino forward, whether I agreed or didn't agree with the casinos, met all the criteria. The only criteria he didn't meet is what we thought we could decide up here at the last minute, which is very costly and very arbitrary and very capricious for our community. So, understanding that and I'll, I'll share that with my council here that this, you know, I'm gonna support that, this structure as it is, meets the criteria that, that was outlined for these people to do when they started this process, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to approve the placement of the statue with the stipulations per the Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Richie Nordstrom and Lady Liberty wins.
Yes.
All right. Bill list, Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have two additions to the bill list that is attached. The first one is for Hill's Materials in the amount of $19,355.84. The second is to Savvy Designs for $23,510.09. The total new bill, or new total for the bill list is $8,413,757.96.
Motion by Estes, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
We have a motion by Estes and a second by John Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. It's 8:21 PM, less than two hours.